We had to, Roma, through this all by herself, I didn't help at all. She's explaining to me.
Nothing different from what?
Never.
Let me put out a disclaimer real quick. This information came from Carlinson Institute of Department of Georgia Department of Revenue and one of the others that I've not really dreamed up in my head.
The Department of Transit.
Yeah, Department of Transit.
I've got two more.
Everybody, we had to make some assumptions on here. We're gonna make some assumptions on here. Every city provided the same services.
The same exemptions, tax exemptions. That's the only way you can get an aggregate there.
But, as you know, the city of Baydale doesn't necessarily provide the same services as the city of Diffin does. But now, I have a cemetery name, I don't know. What city's cemetery?
Maybe it's Parks.
Well, some of them, some of them don't provide the same types of exemptions that we do either. And looking at on its like, well, the city's pretty generous.
But if you just wanted to do a comparison of the mileage rate, you know, where we stand compared to everybody else, we're about fourth from the bottom. Perry's, I think, is the closest one to us now. Population fourteen thousand two hundred, very fourteen point one three mil. So, about, about loss is four point one, but...
Look at the value of the mil.
The, well, that's...
Yeah. One point four million dollar value on the mil, so that's how they can charge it.
Yeah, I looked it up. When I multiply the mil and I'm saying, they multiply me and seven fifty-nine, the Cowards did the same thing, we made three thirty-eight, so about half his money. They got about a third, I think, it's about two times, three times the pay we did. But I just told that Larry.
They got a little bit times the budget too.
That's right, so that's a little bit, I mean, I can draw a correlation there, so...
You can't, you can't really, you can't really put them together very separate issues.
Okay.
That was the thing that is glaring to me. I always thought it all mixed, we put them together and it doesn't matter.
Now, that wasn't, that wasn't true. Boy, Carl, let me remind everybody, I'm sure everybody's got it, but state's saying that we both have our CCDR, whatever that is, one of those, between June 30th to July the 8th. I'm sure everybody's aware of it, but I just wanted to throw that out there, everybody. As we go ahead, Larry, you want to start while we're nailing, we got four, is that okay with everybody?
Lois, could you turn Mike, catch up on that with about one hundred percent, please? There you go, now I can see it. Well, you're like, one hundred percent of me good. Thanks, I can read the paper here in front of me. If y'all, this is, the sheet that you have is a summary of the financial code of it. This is revised, this is revised financial statement, if you will, summary. We've added, on the top, you've got a scenario six up there, about two point seven mil. And the reason that occurred is because after Chief Coleman and I sat down with county manager, they requested some additional cuts in the fire department budget. Those cuts are reflected on the fire department budget itself, about two hundred and six thousand dollars. A hundred and forty-three thousand of that is the radios. The county manager has included all of the fire departments' radio replacement and upgrades in the SPOS budget to up there at nine one one center. So he wants to go ahead and pay for all of that upfront and be done with it. That's about four three mil. That's why you said that reduction. If you, if you look at the preliminary, under your general projected revenues, you'll see a one, two, three out there. One was the first scenario we went through with you. Two was a, a proposed scenario that, on actual projected revenues, as we have more information to provide there, or update, and then three is where we are today. So what we're looking at right now is a, um, what over there now? About a twelve point three four nine million dollars in revenue, and that is based upon a two point seven mil rate. And that includes two point seven mil, so, or about nine hundred thirty-four thousand dollars in increased revenue. When you look at your projected expenditures, you're now at twelve million three forty-nine, that's about. That requires two hundred six thousand seven hundred dollar reduction in the fire department expenditures as well.
All right, now that was, we had originally a hundred thousand dollars for radios for fire.
That's right.
And then you told us to reduce that to fifty because he was dying something.
That was the county's half.
So, how did we get a difference of two oh six from what we used to have?
Because he wants to go ahead and pay for all of the fire department radios out of SPOS money.
And we will never have to pay that?
And we won't have to pay that.
And you eliminate the upgrades too?
That, that is also true. We got new radios, we don't need the upgrades. Now, there's, there'll be a caveat to that, and we have to go into executive session to talk about that, and that'll happen tomorrow afternoon, after Spencer called me. So just keep that in mind, okay? So, where are we today? If you look on the second page, that, those numbers, the twelve million that you see there, here again, that includes the contingency of three hundred thousand, radio replacements and capital bill. Okay?
The radio replacements can reduce by a hundred thousand, that's just one place.
Okay.
And the capital fair includes, how, how are the things? The public works, the base, the...
We did pick out our, they have sixty-four hundred, they had that truck to take out.
They got four?
The iron truck, yeah, that was in there for sixty-four hundred, six thousand four hundred, that's part of the county's.
Okay. So, now some fun stuff, so, you don't have the, the pay compensation plan that the University of Georgia put in, there's three different levels of that, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy, and two hundred and something thousand. I think Lois has got the exact numbers on that dropping out somewhere.
Second page, it didn't print, it's on the screen, I'm sorry. That was the last thing we put on there.
And those figures do not include the bills?
That's salary only.
Salary applies. It's seven point one for retirement, two fifty, eight fifty-one is the...
Plan A.
Plan B two is one seventy-two, seven seventy-three, and Plan C is one thirty-two, ninety-three. And then of course we have the retirement.
Right. The seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars is a one-time lump sum contribution that we would have to make to cover the liability that if we, if we unfreeze the plan all the way back to two thousand and eight, that's the liability that would be incurred, I'm sorry, not two thousand and eight, that's eleven, twelve, and thirteen liability that we would incur because plans have frozen since two thousand and ten, didn't incur any liability there.
All right, now that was seven forty-five, and then it was seven twenty-seven, and now it's seven sixty?
Seven twenty-one.
Seven twenty-one.
I have a question, just a procedural. With a government budget like this, can we do projections, like Jack Perry was talking about the other day, in other words, you know, as debt gets paid off, like city net debt or whatever, we can allocate that money then to go into salaries or whatever? Can we do that in, for future years, or are we just bound by what's here this year?
Well, for this year, we're bound pretty much by what we have this year. We have not, we don't have the finances to afford it, that you get to the, that we can do a five-year projection. We're still financing all that stuff, we're still finding things, if you will, and as soon as we can identify, we'll go about your projections, we'll go about your capital plan, we'll go about your debt plan, debt service, and how that impacts everything. But at this point in time, we're probably...
But I think part of Julie's question is, do we have the authority to do something for future years? We're not here, other people...
We can do projections all day long.
Do projections, but you...
The budget's not good annually, so, that's just, that's just a tool that you can use to kind of figure out where you're gonna be five years from now.
Okay, and who keeps up with that projection? In other words, let me just give you an example, I'm gonna use city net debt because that's something we're all familiar with. Let's say city nets pay off in three years, and in three years, we want to take that payment and, and put it directly on employee compensation. Who keeps up with that to know that in three years, it, you know, it, that comes back to the council and say, okay, guys, that debt's paid three years ago, that council wanted to do this, here it is, is this the will of this council? How, how do we keep up with that, so it don't get lost in the shuffle?
We keep up with the finance.
Okay.
But, having said that, and we'll talk about the, the city net debt in a little while, we're gonna present that at workshop tomorrow, there's a resolution there about refinancing that debt.
Right.
Back in October, I believe, boys, I'll give the city manager authority to go out and, you know, find better rates and get things refinanced, and we've done that. But, if I'm not terribly mistaken, there's something, the general fund part of that debt service, about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, that's currently.
Right.
So, but we'll get into it later.
I was having a fact, I was saying, if I wanted to give that debt, if I was finding the money to cut the house, I would give a percent?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, I didn't know how, if, in a govern, like in the state legislature, you know, they always say one legislative year can't, you know, burden the next legislative, you know, and I didn't know if we had to operate under that same mandate. It stands to reason that we would, but...
We do operate under that same mandate.
Yeah, so, but to be able to have those projections, to say our goals are, you know, city nets paid down, maybe all that money now goes to employee compensation, or maybe that goes to...
That's what I wanted to say, though. That's a special plus, plus five, five to pay off the city net debt. If we pay it off early and don't have to spend much interest, we can't use that plus five money or anything except retiring the city net debt.
Okay, there's two components to city net debt, right now...
That was a good example. I guess a debt, just a debt that we have now.
That I was clear on that.
There's two components to the city net debt. We have four and a half million dollars that were in the referendum to retire that debt. That's four and a half, about six million, so we need to come up with one point five million more dollars.
To finish off the debt.
That's the total debt comes, retirement, that we have to retire. We are working right now, I guess we're waiting on about city net debt, it's just a matter of time, what we're trying to do right now, you will have a resolution tomorrow to account for those one and a half million dollars. So what that does is, when you allocate all of the city net debt to all the different departments, and the general fund alone, it'll free up about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, okay? Of general fund money. Lois, break it off, crack it, stop it. The rest of that money is paid for out of enterprise funds, but the city, the general fund obligation, what we're talking about today, it will relieve us of about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars of tax revenue that we have to spend on debt service.
It'll free up that money.
It'll free that money out. So, that's special, we'll be free up a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. And it'll also retire a bit in three years, or five years.
Could we use that, theoretically, could we use that hundred and thirty-seven to apply to the hundred and fifty-two thousand on a compensation?
Once that money's freed up, you can use it for any general fund out of the... No, it's not...
Now, on the, on the suggested compensation numbers from UGA, do we have to abide by those numbers? In other words, if we said, okay, we've only got a hundred and thirty-seven, and we're short, do we have to come up with a difference, or can we just say, we can't do a hundred and fifty-two, nine fifty-three, but we can do a hundred and thirty-seven instead? Is that an option?
Everything's an option.
Okay. I just want to know, I didn't know if this were hard or bad, not what we used to do.
Understand, understand this, on Plan A, B, and C. Plan B brings you back even with market.
Right.
And Plan A puts you a little bit above market, and Plan C puts you a little bit below market.
Right.
And when you're looking at a hundred and fifty-two thousand, that's, that's addressing the reclassification of all job restrictions and the equity adjustment as well. The equity adjustment takes care of a compaction issue you have. We have police officers right now that have been here eight or eleven years, and they're making four cents an hour more than somebody that starts today. That's where that equity adjustment comes in. So anyone that's been here less than three years, they don't get an equity adjustment. And then three to seven years, you get an adjustment, and then seven years, the boat get an adjustment. That's how that was all calculated.
But, but none of those figures include the bills? So you've got a half, or forty percent, thirty percent?
At least forty percent.
Forty percent. So instead of one fifty-two, it would be forty percent.
It'd be about two hundred thousand. Just about two hundred.
What is the insurance figure?
That's, that's salary alone, all that...
So what is the whole forty percent, is that what you're saying?
Well, benefit, our benefit, forty percent is that all we've been...
That's different, the insurance, and that's a ballpark figure, now, you might vary a little bit, depending on the individual. Then then I think city government insurance, that's a mandatory participation also, about in that, in that kind of plan that we're talking about, about a hundred and, or seven hundred twenty-one thousand. So that's, you're talking about getting about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. If we can find a one and a half million, that's... And so instead of financing five million, nine hundred and something thousand dollars, we're gonna be financing one and a half million less than that, if we can find a one and a half million.
Well, we can get a number if she finds out.
We can. We'll find it.
What'd you say?
Lois says, why are you so weird?
As it stands right now, we've got three hundred thousand dollars contingency, a hundred thousand dollar regular replacement, and a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in capital debt. End of page. So, with that said, I'll turn it over to council and see how where y'all think we'll be.
I don't know how, let me see. You can answer. Why don't we start, if we're going in front, and we do that slide, and we start with two hundred and one hundred?
Can we start with Mary Ann's, because she's got about one third, she's got to take that.
That's fine.
I would start, I say, but you all know that I have expressed some concern all along that we raised taxes, that it will be very difficult for me to support a three mil, a three mil pass of the rest. So I began looking for ways that I thought we could cut the budget and not have a three mil pass of the rest. Now, I want to say also that, as a philosophical basis, I believe you spend what you have, and you stay within what you have. And that's just what I believe. So I looked for ways that things could be cut, and I would be willing to cut some things that some of the rest of you may not be willing to cut. And I have made a proposal here. I got it, it goes out to you. And, and I tried to explain what might be done. Now, some of the things, I know Chris has studied this, and Chris and I talked on the telephone, but I haven't seen any figures he has, and he hasn't seen any I've got on this piece of paper, but we have talked about some things, and some of the things I think we're real. I think the two or three things, and I'll just tell you what I did with this paper. And I think that my expense projections and my revenue projections are not the same as the paper you just led me, exactly. So those are slightly different, a little bit changed. What I did was I listed on this table cuts that I personally would be willing to make. And I would be willing to cut a hundred thousand with contingency, so that means that, I mean, you lose a contingency with a hundred, so I could cut two hundred from that. The radio equipment was the fifty thousand that I thought had to be there. The radio equipment for the police. And then I suggested that we buy four police cars instead of eight that were equipped. And over here in the third column, that tells you how I got to that figure. I took the cost of the equipment, the cost of the cars, added it together, got three forty-four. I divided that by two, because I always know I have five of them. That was a hundred and seventy-two, and if you do that over five years, that's thirty-four thousand years, so that's right, right back to that. There was some projection of Christmas lights, the motion boxes to run them, I don't know what that cost, but I would be willing to cut that. Code enforcement, Larry gave me this number, because this would not include doing anything differently than I have now.
Was that just taking that, that employee out? What was that?
I think it was one of the higher...
They have, I live down there, right now, it works about thirty-five hours a week. January first, part-time employees in order to not take benefits, they have to pick up eight to twenty-nine. So for, as I said, this would be a full-time position, and it's also requested a full-time code enforcement slash building, especially...
But that, that fifty takes those out?
That's settled.
Okay, I just want my trust on the side of it.
Then, there is something called a public works paint machine, a walk-in paint machine. I thought that the county, in addition to doing our asphalt work, was doing our striking, but Larry set me straight on that yesterday, and now we still do our striking. So that was in there. We might still be able to do without that, okay? And then another big change I would make is eliminate all timing for council. I don't think we have to have, because anybody here who's got the state required twenty that they still have to do. And I would take out a third of the travel for the council. Then, with the Tiff Theater, I would put all of the funding except the hotel motel, and that's a hundred and five, nine sixty-five. So, I took the budget with the two point ninety-three, six forty-two, and I subtracted the hotel motel contribution, I left with eighty-seven, six fifty-seven, which I would cut from the budget.
Now, Mrs. C, did you take the revenue out of the Tiff Theater also?
I probably did. Well, I don't know, I'll have to check that figure and see. And let me say, I may have made mistakes. Let me say that, yeah.
Well, that is an enterprise fund, if you remember that I have?
The Tiff Theater?
Yes, it is an enterprise fund. The only amount of money coming out of general fund is sixty-six hundred dollars.
Well, then that's a mistake, I mean, so I could not do it.
The rest is based on whatever revenue they make. We can't spend any more than the additional revenue that they make.
So, so instead of eighty-seven, I would be able, I would have to look at that.
Six thousand six hundred.
That changes a whole lot.
That changes what you and I talked about too, what...
That's all that we put in there.
Six thousand six hundred, that's, well, that's a big question. And the playground equipment, which Chris had pointed out to me, was if you divide that over five years, the twelve five is what we would pay for it. And then, I would be willing to have fewer police officers on the staff. Now, I'm not saying use overtime pay, I'm saying cut the protection of the city office citizens by three, those three positions, and get more coverage from the sheriff's office for citizens of Tiff. Then, my figures are wrong from here on out because of some errors, but what I basically did was, I came up with cuts of six ninety-six, and it looks like that's gonna, the Tiff Theater will mess that up. Anyway, I took those cuts, and I took the projected revenues and handled with the deficit. And then I had more deficit, so I was willing to cut three more police officers. So that would make, right now, we're operating, there's seven police officers in the budget. We're operating a smaller staff than, than, than we have, you know, we're operating without a full staff, for sure. And I would say, provide less protection, my people are not going to dispose of it. Then, going down to the retirement, I would want to add, and I thought it was seven forty-five, so I'd get half this year and half another year. And I think to do that, that would require a millage increase, because obviously we don't have that money. But I think that personally, I could support a one million raise to, in two years, and freeze the retirement plan. And then, when I first started doing this, I made some bigger errors, I took some SPOS money out, and I thought I had a lot more money to spend. And anyway, the Plan C, UGA study, you know, I want to do that, I want to do that, but I've seen, in my figures, no way to do that this year. But, then what I want us to really consider is something I raised at the last council meeting, and that's the amount of tax exempt property we have in this, in the municipal areas of this city. And I know that Roma has told me, and Larry has told me, that some things we cannot cut because of state laws, but whatever, we can cut something that's tax exempt, I think we should look at that, because I keep going back to that. We had an increase in the tax base of eight million dollars this year, that got us only twenty, twenty-one thousand. To get enough, I mean, we're not gonna get that much growth in a year or two, I mean, you're talking about a hundred and twenty-six million or something.
The, if I had to speak to that one, then that data that I provided everyone, I put, I pulled the tax digest for some of the areas, it might, it might be the one that I had. But it tells, it tells what each of the, they're coded, all of the, all of the different types of taxes are coded, and that is in there, and it tells you what is coded as far as a state exemption and things like that. So, that might help you when you look at it, and it's just that it should...
Well, tell me how to look at that, give me one, find one, let me look at it. And let me say this, I may prefer what Chris has come up with than what I've come up with. I mean, you know, this is just...
Discussion.
This is just discussion, and it is really bad.
I might have left it up there, but I'll look, I'll continue to look for it. Thought I had it.
But, I think my bottom line is, that type thing that the...
These are all coatings right here, but back here, it tells you what we need. I'm actually saying what it's in, too.
Yeah, it's got it broken down, and this is a sample. I will make everyone copy this to show, because this explains each of the codes and all of those.
So is there anything that we could bring back on the tax digest that's currently exempt?
We're looking into that. I think one of the biggest issues we were talking about had to do with property property, where they have doctors offices, and my understanding at this point is that unless they get over fifty-one percent revenue from that lease, I don't know that people, it's not, it's tax exempt. So, I did talk with, because we did go over that same issue over in Albany with P V, and I had a discussion with the city attorney over there on a suit, where they will... and I had a discussion with the city attorney over there on a suit, where they will run it, and it's, it's a battle. And we're looking to see exactly what's out there that we can, that we can look at, and get some.
A large amount of ours is actually publicly owned property, like, city and county, that's a big chunk.
But a lot of it, there's twenty, yeah, but there's, twenty-nine, that one had some big garbage figures that he put because of the council, you know, twenty-nine million in churches. The county property in the city, ten million. And then the hospital authority, I don't have it on the floor, and the housing authority, twelve million.
Is that the city? The twenty-nine million, you want the separate property. You want the separate property, that's city and county, one million.
Twelve.
Religions, it's twelve million, as you said. And then B six is a large one, and that's charity, excuse me, educational facility. And that's a twenty-six million dollar. So, that's about fifty-nine million, fifty-eight million.
But my bottom line is that I am unwilling to support a three-year increase, that that's not the thing for restoring retirement plan. I think that's the most crucial thing, in my opinion, when you restore private property. And so, I'm looking for cuts that can keep us, and keep us not raising mileage or anything except the retirement plan. And I hope we can get that. No, no. Okay, that's all I have. But, but let me say, I will be checking with my mother, Larry, when I get back to town tonight, to see where y'all leave this meeting, and I will be here tomorrow at twelve o'clock. So, is that still on, twelve, yeah?
Twelve o'clock is a public hearing on military.
That's right, I mean, I will be at that public hearing.
We won't be having discussions.
Right, right, and I will be there, but we will, we will have to, we will have to cover it. Chance to say, for the public to say, and I won't deal with that, so, if not possible, we need to be there.
Basically, we'll snap and borrow some of this budget presentation, just as I think we got them. Jessica and I, yes, are still putting together some additional numbers on why we got where we are. The impact that's had on the budget.
I would like for the Gazette to know that if I am not at these meetings, it's because my husband may be having surgery soon, and that's why I won't be here if I'm not here. But I will be, I can vote on the twenty-eight, even by absentee, we will vote on, and I will. One other question I have, and it has to do with Ricky Hobbie, because I see him standing there. And that is this, and I know it's an enterprise fund, and it's not the general fund. But I'm wondering, there's a good bit of equipment that you suggested that we purchase. And with a proposal out there to, for someone else to contract the sanitation service, I'm wondering, do we really need to buy more equipment at this point in time? If that's something we can discuss at his time.
That, that equipment is landfill, and from what I know, the landfill is being simple.
Okay, okay, well, that's.
Okay, I was looking at your cut, your cuts here. I can, I can understand, I can deal with your police cut, but I cannot deal with a police cut. But the reason why, it takes the sheriff department thirty minutes to get them out. If I call, if I call nine-one-one, and ask for a sheriff department to come over, somebody to come, from the sheriff department over there, it takes sometime thirty minutes. Because they, they, when they get there, it's a window, and ta-ta, we have to come from our, our bigger. But now, I know we dress me, me and, and, I tell you shit here, but cutting the police protection is just so we can afford to do. You live in a different part of town than I live. Protection in my part of town, if we don't get some protection over there, then we might as well go get your ass. And start, and that's going to put more crime, more shootings, accidents in the streets. If we don't have the police, then you might as well get you, go out and go protect your own house. I mean, that's just my money. And we do need that police department, and we need, we need the extra help. But if we can afford it, we need to get these other three people. And I, I can understand, we can cut four of the cars from eight to four, I can, that I can deal with. But we need every, all the personnel we can get on those streets out there. That's just, I mean, that's just about, I don't know how, if, if we got to find the money, Larry, then we need to try to find it. Because cutting the police protection is, is just one hell of a thing, I ain't gonna, I ain't gonna support that.
Well, I, as I said, I would be willing to do that, and rely more on sheriffs protecting the private citizens.
Okay, that's for the bottom, let's go to the district three. You're next, Chris.
Okay, district two.
Piece two.
What's your answer?
Now, piece two.
And your four.
And one.
There you go.
Okay, I'm too busy each time.
Oh, I didn't, I knew you were next, but it's.
Okay, I understand, my main thing when I went to this budget, I met with Larry extensively, and had both phone calls, Mary Ann, she and I both were going through this thing, was our employees, trying to unfreeze retirement and giving them the code. That was my main motive for my operation, going through this budget, so let's just. And Mary Ann and I have similar, similar cuts, although none of my cuts involve reducing the police.
Okay.
Okay.
Have you got something to give us?
You know, I don't. I tried to type it out, and I was low on printer ink, so I said, well, shoot. So, but, you want to write on Mary Ann's sheet, the cuts I go over.
All right.
Okay.
Let you make the last call on Chris's.
Okay, the contingency fund, I also cut that by two hundred thousand dollars. So, she and I are on the same page with them. The, the next cut I had was, I had on the Tiff Theater, was fifteen thousand dollars, cutting out the janitor. But while I'm here, and here, the max we can cut is sixty-six hundred dollars, is that correct?
It's actually sixty-nine forty-four.
Okay.
We adjusted it a little bit, so just want to use that number. That's the general.
Sixty-nine forty.
Sixty-nine forty-four.
Okay, all right, all right, so, all right, just to make it easy, we cut seven thousand from, from that department. Okay, I did have a I T cut of thirty-three thousand dollars, but Larry said that was for contracts and software upgrades we have to have. So, Mary Ann and I, I told you that, or not, but that would be something we have to keep. Of course, cut a hundred thousand dollars out for the police and fire radios.
But now, but now the fire, we don't, what do we cut, nothing?
Well, discussions today.
Well, you still, you still got to budget it in your preliminary at a hundred thousand dollars.
So, you would cut fifty thousand now.
Okay.
So, what are you cutting?
Okay, so, well, let's line out of the police radio and the fire radio, okay?
So, can I cut those out? And what did you cut out for radio, fifty or a hundred for the fire?
The maximum that we can cut, I guess, is now fifty thousand, is that right? Yeah. A hundred on the police, right, okay.
Let me say this, the county, on, on the fire department radios, if they wanted to, they're going to be going ahead and pay for all of the radios for the fire department. So, that would have been about a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars reduction in radio, in radio upgrades, according to what county has requested. Now, we'll go into the second session tomorrow and talk about that.
Okay, next, on code enforcement, I had cut back twenty thousand dollars. But I can, I agree with Mary Ann's cut, to put the line out of that, which would be fifty thousand.
Let me ask this, would y'all be amenable to changing, if you're going to cut the code enforcement position, the full-time building inspector slash code enforcement person, would you be amenable to leaving the, or changing the part-time position that we have down there to a full-time position? Because it needs to help. If you can't be in the office, somebody needs to be in there.
What's that going to cost us?
If you say it's thirty.
The, the code position, what was it, thirty-five thousand, is that?
So, fifteen thousand?
About fifteen. They're working about thirty-five hours now, so a traditional five hour a week.
Right.
And that, that is a general fund out.
All right, so, let's pause right here, Chris, your preliminary, you're asking for forty-five thousand. Then you mentioned Mary Ann, well, it's fifty. So, what's the real number they're asking for?
The code enforcement position is about forty-five thousand, that's the pay of benefits. Bert, sir, Bert, your code enforcement office, that position, that position's forty-five thousand with benefits.
Yes.
And the part, and going from part-time secretary will have a full-time, what's the original cost for that? All part.
Not a whole lot, I don't remember.
It was thirty-five dollars.
Right, that would, you set up thirty-five dollars a week without benefits, good for.
Without benefits, oh, right.
Lois has come to us, we're sent just a minute.
Okay. As I guess, from twenty-six five last year to twenty-seven eight, because it's southern.
That's southern, we can do it up there.
That's, that's just.
That's where I put it off?
Just southern, but that would include.
Is that where I put it off?
Is that what you're saying, Kitty?
Yes.
Close to there.
Close to there, so at the most, eight thousand, two thousand.
So, let's call it two thousand. All right, so they asked for forty-five, so we can cut that to forty-three thousand. Is that what I'm here, and we can make that person a full-time?
Or three thousand.
Okay, so forty-three thousand, okay. Okay, um, okay, next, let's see what we're at here. Playground equipment, that's twelve thousand five hundred dollars for a new piece of equipment. My question is, one, is that, do we replace an existing piece of equipment that's dangerous, like an endangered child, or is that just new equipment to add?
We have, on the south side of the park, by the stage over there, there was some old, there was an old swing set in there, and some other stuff that didn't open in, and built that, kind of, I guess, kitchen shake, maybe somewhere. So, this is a new equipment, replace the swing sets on that side of the park. It's a multipurpose, you know, it's a slide, it's swinging, it's bouncing out of the park.
Okay.
Picture over in here, buddy.
So, okay, so the swings are on fault here right now?
They're gone.
So, they're already gone?
We removed it.
Okay, well, let's just, let's wait on the playground equipment to maybe next year. That's just Chris getting talking.
So, you're saying, can where out?
Twelve thousand five hundred dollars out.
At the flea row.
Okay, all right, next, on the D D A Main Street, we were giving them sixty-four thousand one twenty-two, plus thirty thousand six forty for the theater. But we're taking over the theater now.
Where is that, Miss Budget, because I, I couldn't find that.
Um, let's see, I've got, there's some tabs in here.
Look at the hometowns, I know.
But Main Street was given, Main Street slash D D A was here a hundred and nine thousand.
Yes, hundred and nine, and I, I passed out, and you should, please, if you want some breakdown. Is that the hotel motel, to go to the hotel motel?
How, how do I?
Um, D D A. Main Street, D D A, it's up to you, so I do that.
Okay. The unchanged.
And twelve.
Okay.
So, I do the change.
Okay, so the difference is that two sixty-six, or between.
Looking for street, this one, but I maybe, this should break down what they submitted.
Okay.
Their total budget, and they won't care. What makes that up, if you're looking at the front page, what makes that up is, see, Main Street, then a hundred and eight, two forty-one, and then their, the hometown holidays. They've increased that by five thousand dollars, it was five thousand dollars, and it's increased it from. If you look at the city, sort of, the Main Street program, it's an increase of forty-four thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars.
I just want to know why we're giving forty-one thousand dollars?
For a total of a hundred and eight, two forty-one. Here, Larry, just give me this.
Uh, that's, just look at Tom. This is, this is also our work papers that I work with, LaCrisa, just look up here. This is what we're actually proposing.
Okay, I put it there by. At the very top.
Did you see the forty-four and one nineteen there as well? And that's because it's broken down between Main Street and the theater and the hometown holidays. So, that's your break up total, what we can refer to is.
We can, we can, that's more.
I mean, that's what, that's what makes all of it. What they're asking for this year is an increase in the Main Street. Forty-four, based on the, 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 most of their projected budget, which is all this coming along.
Now, aren't they, aren't they?
They are, they are, are another, another portion, and we do it at forty thousand dollars.
Well, that's, that's what I'm getting to, I don't, I don't understand the increase, especially with now it's Main Street. That's, that's something, I just think that would look in there.
I think we, I think that was, sure, we did.
Because the liberal thing that hasn't been, they, they, they get it.
Right, it looks like there. Okay, so, so the forty-four, one nineteen on. Is that forty-four thousand, is it right or wrong? It's right.
Based on what they're asking.
That's what, this is, this is. Think you're listening to their request.
This is their request. This is for the.
I think you're listening to their request.
This is their request. This is for the.
My say, okay.
But we, y'all, last year, y'all, I wanted to see.
I, I. Yeah. Well, this is.
He's been bringing a copy.
You just opened the Main Street, D D A, that's what I'm, and, and. And, and the overall difference from the one oh nine to the one eighteen gets only a difference of eight hundred and two sixty-six. But that's because the one oh nine included the Tiff Theater.
Right.
And, and that's to lose some of the buildings, and the buildings less than what you're seeing there. Because there, it's broken down by the cafeteria.
Right, but also, but the recommending or, or.
Yes, well, they have asked for an increase on the Main Street.
Right, okay.
They consider that a Tiff Theater.
Okay.
Can you work some again?
Hey, guys.
Can you keep it down a little bit, please?
Thank you.
Budget that you're looking at, last year, remember, past couple of years, council has requested to see everything that the departments requested. Everything that they've requested is what you see today, with the exception of the fire department, which has been gone through, which you told them myself, and kind of after.
Okay.
When we get down to the final budget, you're going to see. When we get down to the final budget, you're gonna see, the DDA will be funded at the same level we were funded last year. The theater will be taken out of their budget, and it causes the theater fund budget now. That's what, that's the number you'll see.
Okay, so just for continuity purposes, I'm going to go ahead and remove this forty-four thousand, so I'm going to add that to my list of cuts.
So you had forty-four thousand for the Tiff. I mean, forgive me, yeah.
Right. Okay. All right, now, some things have changed on my numbers, so I'm going to just add these up right quick, and I'll tell you. All right, so that's four hundred and fifty-six thousand.
My employees know I'm going to look at this, I'm not on my phone, I've got notes in here.
The total cuts I've got is four hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred dollars.
And I changed yours.
Okay.
And Chris, those dollars will come to the DDA. The DDA.
Um, okay, so let's just, let's just call it four fifty for now. And then to do the retirement fund, like I said, that was my main goal, when you look at this budget, is to unfreeze retirement and do some sort of salary adjustment. Uh, up with the COLA following DGA's recommendations. So that's seven twenty-one plus, and I had one eighty on the salary adjustment. Okay, so let's just, for right now, let's just call it nine hundred thousand dollars we need. So we're, we're halfway there. So, and that's not with any other deeper cuts. And Mariana had the idea of police cars, I don't want to reduce the police force, but cars certainly, and some other things. So I thought I'd say this, if we can find an additional matching level of cuts, then we're there for our employees. So I'm sorry I had to hand out, see what I think, but that's, that's my cut.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's using the one point five.
One point five million increases, okay.
I mean, it's easier to get there with three, as Larry and I talked about. But even with one point five, I mean, it needs to be stressed, hey, we're doing this for our people and to get our budget right for our people.
All right, but can I ask you this? Okay, fine. The one eighty for the, for the salary adjustment?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that Plan B? Or is that Plan C, whether it?
I think that was Plan C.
It's Plan B.
Is it Plan B?
Well, that, that includes benefits, so you gotta have forty percent more of that, that's what I told him.
One seventy, so a hundred and seventy-two, a hundred and seventy-three thousand for Plan B, plus forty percent.
What's that room, the whole thing? You had it up there a second ago, you did the.
I did, I did the forty, you added about seventy thousand to forty percent.
Two hundred and forty-five.
So instead of one eighty, we ought to add in two forty.
Just to be certain.
That is two. If you go with Plan B, then if you went with Plan C.
If you went with Plan C. Sixty-one, sixty-two thousand. All right, that puts you at two hundred and fifteen.
So Plan C would be two fifteen and benefits and Plan B, two forty.
Okay. And I'm not steadfast on D A or C.
But Chris, what I think in summary that you've said is that you found cuts of four fifty-six thousand.
Yes, ma'am.
In order to take those cuts and add the seven twenty-one plus two forty. You gotta have nine sixty, nine sixty-one. So you've got to find, that means more cuts and still having one of that real increase. But you still gotta find four hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars more cuts that you haven't found.
No, but it's, you've had some great ideas, and I know Johnny does, and I do, and Jack does, so between the five of us, we can.
And what if we, if we did that over two years? You know, can you do that? Can you save that money? Can you put it in the plots?
Well, and that's the thing I had in our, our workshop I mentioned, you know, was divided up into plan. When I spoke to Larry, he said, if we do that, that number's only going to increase the next year. And so even though we're applying monies to it, we're still going to be a little further behind, so.
But that, if you're going to implement the type of unfreeze the retirement fund. So that you don't incur another two hundred something thousand dollars in my bill, it would be better to go ahead and unfreeze that effect to my purpose this year. So the challenge for me then, and for Lois, my favorite finance guy, is to find three hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
For, for half. For thirteen, is that what you're saying, when you say this year?
Now, we had planned the sub, the whole seven twenty-one, but your challenge to me was to go up to half of it. I think that's a good answer.
Okay.
So that, whatever nine hundred something thousand you have there, take three hundred something thousand off of it.
Okay.
And that's where you are.
So, so really, you go ahead and say, six hundred and fifty thousand is what we need to come up with. And we've already found, let's just say, four hundred and fifty thousand, so we need to come up with two hundred thousand dollars.
I said three hundred and fifty thousand to take off.
You got the full seven twenty-nine in there.
Yeah, seven twenty-one.
Three hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and sixty thousand five hundred.
That's right.
Still got to find whatever that balance is, because that's on the short end.
Right.
If you did the south, the retirement over two-year period. Another option would be to go, might be to give them a time of this year. And a salary the next year.
Um, okay, I want to go ahead. So you're at a one and a half mill increase, and we're still six hundred short.
It's down. No, we're now, yeah, we're two hundred thousand more short to make all these hopes and dreams happen.
Okay. And that's at a one and a half million increase, if we looked at a two and a half.
How do you come up with two and a half?
Okay, okay, let's go back in right quick. All right, seven twenty-one plus two fifteen, let's just, you know, call it nine hundred thousand dollars, right? Let's see, Plan C, that's Plan C, okay. We found four fifty, right? Let's just say that for right now.
Okay.
So we need another four fifty, right? Okay, and you mentioned, you might be able to come up, my challenge to you is to come up with some money.
Okay.
Half of that.
Half of fifty.
And you think you can do that?
Yes.
Okay, so we, we have a shortfall right now of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You think you can come up with how much? Three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars? Okay, so that leaves us then with, we need to find a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, right? From here, you agree?
I gotta have that written down.
So we need to. Right.
And that's my question, if we went to two or two and a half, does that close that gap so that we don't have to, so that that works?
Probably would, but, so one twenty-five is what we need to find. Now, we might be able to find that in the police cars, or some other place, because I don't think, I may have to include any of that.
It does, but you have to understand that when we find out since police cars, and I know you went five years, I think you said you looked up.
It is five years.
But we can find out some more, in the GMA school.
That was in my, my, five years.
There's someone who finds for twenty-five.
But this was, they said five.
I think police cars won't be financed for three years, that's neither here nor there. The thirty-four thousand, that's the half-year interest on that long. I don't remember what the actual number was, but. So sooner or later, you're going to have to pay them the full thirty-four thousand, or, or whatever comes to this.
So that's where we're at right now, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Can you write that down on that board? Or, no, you can't, but.
Well, I, I guess I can.
You can write it on Lois's computer and quit it tonight.
You'll get it tonight, I'll do it.
I'll do that, how about that? I'll just forward you my own stuff, and she can eat the whole, how about that?
I like that.
I'll do that.
Because I didn't follow that.
Okay, so that's, that's my presentation, the council.
All right, good report, done.
Okay, I, um, okay, the thirty-four thousand dollars for the police cars, five years, is that what you're saying? Is that what you're saying?
Either three or five.
We have five. Okay, if we cut the police car, there you go, we said we need to come up with a hundred and twenty-five. If we cut the police car, the thirty-four from the police car. That's, that's really the only cut that I could see, that was the, the radios, you know, we talk about the radio, then we could put, I was just.
It's a hundred.
Uh-huh, so, if we got, if we got the radio for a hundred, took that hundred from, for the radio, and the thirty-four for the car.
So he's already included a hundred in the.
How long you can, Claire?
So you can't take it out.
I wish we, wish we could take it down twice.
Yeah, I didn't follow you, but. Okay, so we're sticking back to the hundred and twenty-five thousand. Okay, we said we're going to take the thirty-four thousand from the police cars. Okay, now, 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 go to the, to the DDA. Uh, Mariana, you said you could, you could take out eight, eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-six.
Well, that was, I said that, but the only, that was just taking out the increase that they asked for for this year of last year. But Chris has figured out, you could take out more than that.
Okay, so that's zero, you see that, that's hotel motel dollars, but that's not.
Not general fund dollars, so, so all we can have that is my eighty-two sixty-six.
Right, this can be.
So you gotta change that.
Somebody make a copy. I'm around there.
Okay.
And then Mariana's comments right there, is that okay?
Mariana, we estimated that service on the police car, seventy-seven thousand dollars for here for three years.
So if you bought half of those, you return half of seventy-seven thousand, how this year?
All part.
So it's about seventy-seven.
That's seven, seven thousand for eight parts.
I love that. That's what I have on this sheet.
So one more would be thirty-eight five hundred.
Thirty-eight five hundred.
But.
I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page on that, on the DDA. Chris was talking about the forty-four thousand, I want to make sure that I'm not miscommunicating. I understand that's from hotel motel money, so we're not, we can't take forty, that forty-four thousand dollars would not be something that we would be cutting.
Right.
That's in general fund.
Right, and the only thing to the general fund that we would be talking about would be the eighty-two sixty-six. Possibly.
That's not general fund either, that's hotel motel.
Okay, so really, when we talk about the DDA.
You can take that either.
Couldn't take either.
Not on general fund, not for the DDA, because all that is in hotel motel, either your hotel motel tax, or we have no general fund that we can use. So that drops your number down.
About four and a half.
Four and a half.
Forty-four thousand.
So that makes it. So.
Make it down. Flash, flash, private cash.
Now, on the sixty-nine forty-four for the Tiff Theater, that was a proposed transfer in from general fund, so that kept it coming.
I apologize for losing, but I will try to be under your pressure.
Do a lot of reading there for you.
Yes.
Well, Chris, this is, you've done some site for it there.
Sure.
I read a newspaper this morning about the, and I just kind of skimmed the words, so I can. Was the fire department budget, do you raise hotel motel section? Was, was the sign decreased after the burn on the site? But there's like your free sales allowance. So wasn't it standard reasoning on the city side that's going to be, Chris, as well? He gets his plan.
Four, huh?
Yes. All right. I have a question with the, believe it or not, say this, because I was so adamant about this last year. We've been operating about a contingency fund for the last year. If something were to happen over the course of the next year, where we either had a decrease in spending somewhere that was unanticipated, or an increase in revenue that was unanticipated, I would want that money to go towards the contingency. But we can make up that difference, that roughly, it's not make up the entire difference, but a big chunk of that hundred something thousand dollar difference, by not funding the contingency fund this year, this coming year. You know, I don't, I live at the same Hundred Ways to Sunday, and I know that this, this book is just the request. I'm going to fall back on the experts in finance to figure out where those cuts can be. But I'm in the same, I, I support Chris and I support Mariana in that my priorities are that retirement's got to be reinstated. And I, you know, I don't need the implication of doing it half now and half later, or doing it all now, so I have to think about that. I'm not prepared to answer that at this moment until I see some more of the figures. Um, and we've got to, we've got to support one of those plans for the employees. I could, I could opt for Plan C, and at least give something to make up, something's better than nothing. What, to be able to go through and say, cut here, cut there, I can't, I can't do that, I'm not prepared to do that. But I would have to rely on the two of you to, to get out through there. Um, I think, you know, I could live with going, kind of following the same route that Mary Ann and Chris have taken. I can support everything that, um, that Chris has run out to, uh, to cut, to get to that, you know, four fifteen, four sixteen number. Um, I, I'm with Johnny, though, I support you a hundred percent in that we cannot cut our, um, we can't do anything to impact that budget on that police department. Crime is up in our community, and I think it's because, uh, we have fewer officers, we, you know, and it's, and it's all, it's not just, you know, your district. It's all across, it's, it's the whole family, it's everywhere. And, um, we cannot, you know, we just, we, we cannot do without a safe community, so I can't support doing anything without the police department budget. But my priorities would be, uh, that retirement and least Plan C on the, the employees. Um, I have no problem eliminating playground equipment, the Tiv theater money. Uh, I have no problem cutting council travel, the council budget. Um, the, the one person for code enforcement, I hate to have to cut that, but if there was a cut, I, I mean, I, I know that Port, Port does need some administrative help full-time. I can support that, but the, the actual other officer, uh, code enforcement officer. And I, you know, I, I have to look, like I said, I have to look at experts on how to accomplish those. Um, I don't have an issue with, um, I don't have any difficulty with this. Um, I think, I think we have to do that, to be, to respond, to, to provide the level of services that the people want and need. To provide the people to provide that service, we've got to have that three million. If we can do it too, let's do it too, but, but, um, I, I think we need that three million, Chris, and I can support that. And it's a, it's a, like I said, it's a tax that I'm imposing on myself, like we all will. But we, we can't go without funding retirement, we can't go without taking care of the people.
Um, most.
Yes.
If we didn't ask about it from where, from where?
What's your take, Jamie? What, I mean, what's your thought? You, you've asked each of us, and a bit, like, I'm curious about your own.
I'm not concerned about these people that sit out here. Uh, I know when I was on board in the nineties, we didn't have this problem, we gave our people coles. Our retirement, probably post child, with all the technical, just, just downright good. And I come back in two thousand eight, retirement shot to hell. Uh, we don't have any money left. Then the downturn economy gets to September two thousand eight. This is, this is a lame example of a buy.
I know, but what's your, what's your?
I'm good.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry.
Yeah. I never did get far enough. I, I, I listened to what Mary Ann said, and Chris said, and Johnny, and you. Now, listen to what the staff says. And I have to, I have to look at this thing from the entire seat, not just our staff, but not just our employees. I have to look at it from the standpoint of our community. And things like, you start raising taxes, I say I won't raise them, I'm just saying. I'll do a question myself. You got fixed, you got, I, maybe I just want to call or something, my phone is off. I get text messages, I get emails, I bump into, I can't go to the grocery store, I, y'all are, but I bump into ten people, people will talk about everything. So I, I have a pretty good fix, and I've heard a few people come and say, it's okay, we want our rate. And maybe they do, and that's all well and good. I hear the folks on fixed incomes. Jeez, we got, we got, people a little longer, we've got eighty and ninety-year-old people out there that don't fix incomes. Even though you have three categories of, of raises, uh, senior citizens, your home state exemption, and then your investors, so to speak. Or people that don't have those too. Um, we'll go up stats and stuff. Now, having said that, I did ask her, and she did, and she handed it all out, you know, this is pretty, it's neat information. And for y'all in the audience, we didn't... Ask her to take all the cities that was in a, what, fifty-mile radius, fifty, comparable size. Take a look at, uh, what their budget radius, what their budget radius, their, their population, and the value of them there. This is pretty interesting reading, I, I wish that all our employees would take a look at this. What it says, we're pretty low. Uh, I think that's what I get out of it. Uh, at six point seven five nine, that, uh, we're still pretty low. It's now the time to do it. We gotta get our retirement back, right? I hear y'all talking about, we're gonna do half here, half there. Uh, I am glad that we don't have any furloughs. There's several people, like my two children work for the state of Georgia, they went up for ten years. They haven't had a raise in five years, and they have been getting furloughed until this past year. Our, our, our teachers are getting furloughed. But we aren't talking about furloughing anybody with the city, as far as I know, that's not even, uh, always coming up, but I mean, that's, that's just talking about. You haven't had a raise in five years.
Three, three percent the last six years.
Three percent. Well, I know when I got here.
Did you look at that, Mary?
Wait a minute, hold on, when I got here, me and my mom gave them a bonus, everybody gave them a bonus. We called it cold, we called it bonus, it was like, at least three percent. So I know we hadn't had anything in about five years, and we had one bonus, and then that, bonus doesn't help you on your long-term either. It's just a one-time thing. But getting back to what I was saying. I don't know where I am. Uh, I don't know if I'd vote for one, two, or three, or none. But it looks like everything that you and Mary Ann have cut. And I know there could be some more cuts, but you, you're talking about the contingency fund, God knows, I agree with you. It's like, it's like, uh, ride down a mountain blindfold, not to have anything in a contingency fund. And we did go through a hole here, by the seat of our pants. So we've only got a hundred left, once you yank out that two hundred, you can go back and get the other hundred out. But that's nickel and dime, we need to do something drastic. I think I heard Mary Ann say she was willing to go one. I've heard you say you're willing to go one and a half. Uh, Johnny, I, I don't know if I've heard what you said, I think I've heard before that you might be willing to go up, I can't know what it was. Uh, Julie, I know you're comfortable with the three. But I can't tell you where I am right now today, this very second. Um, I've still got to do some homework, do a lot of, a lot of searchers. Uh, you know, I, I agree with you, take care of our police department, our, our, our crown radius is up, it's, it's hard to keep people. It's hard to keep people in all departments, our department, public works department, the, every department, every department's represented out here. It's hard to keep people, but we don't have retirement, it's for us. We can't get raises, we can't take care of the people, you know, we have never paid these employees what we pay me on it. Never have, but we've always given them good benefits, and we can't have that. So when you ask where I am, I've been forwards and backwards, and I've upside down and all around. And, uh, I still, at this very second, can't tell you what I'm willing to vote for. As far as a military interest. But I'm getting there. So I think everybody that said something is, is, um, I appreciate that. And Larry, go ahead and say what you were gonna say, but now I, if we're all, when we get off, and talking up here at this table, I'm looking forward to them talking, with, with no recourse, no retaliation. I'm sorry that Mary Ann is gone, but I understand why she's gone, she's got a sick cousin that's out in here now. I have, probably heart, I'm having a heart attack. But I wanna hear them once again. So Larry, Clay, and old Christmas, Ross O'Lucre, you know. What did that mama eat?
Put in, make it put in that mama's way.
Mary and Council. I understand that y'all have reservations about a military increase, but think about this. A three-mil increase on a senior home state exemption, forty-five dollars a year, is three dollars and seventy-five cents a month. Three dollars and seventy-five cents a month for a three-mil increase on a hundred thousand dollar home. On, with the regular ten thousand, regular home state exemption. It's, um, five dollars a month for property home. And then it's ten dollars a month if you don't have the exemption. Now, what the city has done, and what we've been able to do, and why we're willing to do what we're able to do, to avoid a military increase, is we've robbed, and I mean literally, we have robbed the enterprise funds, we've robbed the savings accounts. And we're to the point now that there's nothing else to rob.
And robbed the next year's budget since two thousand eight.
Yeah, we robbed next year's budget, too. But, and, and we did that by providing budgets that had, for lack of a better term, an over, um, over expectations on revenues. So there were revenues that were in the budget that simply weren't there. So, so when you get to the end of the fiscal year, what we transferred last year, was ten hundred thousand? Two hundred fifty thousand dollars we pulled out of the, that don't make no fun? That money's gone. We don't have anybody to pull in anywhere else to pay it in the year if we don't have the money in the budget. And when you go back, and there again, Jessica and Morris are, are finance, are pulling together some numbers for us. But we've gone back to nineteen ninety-six on the retirement fund, that's, Jessica's been that far back, and they've actually, she's tracked that. And when you get to two thousand eight or ten, somewhere along there, there's a huge spike in retirement. We had to pump three point six billion dollars into the retirement fund that year, cash, money. That money came from the old water fund, it came for, from wherever they could grab, grab revenues at the time, to cover this piece of that fund. And then if you start looking at our fixed costs, our insurance premiums, things that we have absolutely no control over, they have gone up and up and up and up and up. And the only reason that y'all haven't had to raise the military rate is because we've moved from three hundred people down to two, three, two hundred and thirty-four employees now. You've got a police department out there that's running at two-thirds on patrol. They're causing me to keep the position.
Well, we're already at infant, we're twenty-something people down. Across the board.
Across the board, there, well, that's, those positions were budgeted, they were. The city as a whole, and I talk in general fund only. There's, there's twenty-four positions that we aren't filling because we don't have the money. There are eleven vacancies in the street department.
That's what, that's what.
I mean, eleven vacancies that have not been filled for years. And if you look around the city, you're starting to see it. You got grass growing out the sidewalks, you got dog films growing out of sidewalks, and we just can't get to all of it. You got storm drains that have to be repaired, it's just one thing after another. And you cannot continue down that road, it just, it can't happen. Some time or another, we have to, as the staff and as council, be physically responsible, and do what has to be done to operate the city. And I'm asking for three mils. We need three mils to at least get started. Talk about another thing here. We cut out an entire layer of, of, uh, management. Your public works director, your utilities director, your, um, Parkinson caretaker superintendent. You have not filled your director of operations position since I was the city manager. Director of operations is supposed to be taking care of all the operations of public works and utilities. To give me time to do what I should be doing as city manager, rather than try to have managed other departments, which thank goodness for the staff up there, Donna and Crystal, I don't know where you are, but if it wasn't for those two ladies, I'd be pulling my hair out. Uh, and then we come to contingency. Tomorrow, you're going to be, uh, hopefully adopting Resolution Gatsby fifty-four. And in that resolution, they have, it says in there that we're required to maintain a certain contingency for operations. Uh, typically speaking, for the past fourteen years that I've been here, uh, the auditor said, you need to maintain two to three months of operational funds, as a reserve. That's three million dollars. If you put a hundred thousand dollars a year into the budget every year to maintain that, as we're required to do according to Gatsby, how it's supposed to take you, thirty years? To get to three million? If we don't get thirty more years without a contingency, without a reserve, that's where we are. And, and I'm telling you guys, there is no money left to be dragging in at the end of the year. It just isn't there. So that's, that's it, my piece.
Let me say this, go ahead.
Uh, personally, I didn't, uh, indicate whether, on my take on the, on the military rate. And I just, I, I, I'm doing my fingers, and I was listening to whatever I said. But I would, I would favor a military. I, I, I'm not, I don't know what, how big, or how, how little. But, but I, I can live with, and I know we need a rate increase. You know, I know this, and I'm sorry to come back here to this stuff so easily, but I know we need a, a rate increase. And I don't know how far I'm willing to go with it, whether I'm willing to go three, or whether I'm gonna go one and a half. But I know we need, we, we, we're gonna have to do something. So I sit here and pat our feet. We've been doing that for, I mean, this, this, this system, it, it, it didn't just happen yesterday, this happened a long time ago. You know, we, we just walked, Chris, we just walked into this thing. The, the, we walked into the water, the water's already been splashed in our face. So now what we can only do is dry off our face, and try to keep the water from splashing on us again, and fix this thing. Uh, 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 we just might as well just go to the house, 'cause it need fixing. You know, I mean, it's apparent that it need fixing, 'cause it is broken. So whatever it takes to fix it, I hope this council, and, and city manager, and the mayor, I hope we can work it out for these people, to get their retirement back, and to get some money built up, so we don't have to worry about getting the lights shed off day by day.
Let me say this, I'll be, I'm an optimist, and I felt like our economy was on the road to recovery. But sometimes, we're gonna tell, you know, down here in southern part, southern part of the United States, and maybe we just get to run, other people are saying it's already fixed. I think we're gonna get better. There was something that came up, uh, can't remember who it was, I think it was, uh, George Paul, I think. Good friend of mine.
You name him.
Have a senior mind. He's retired.
Jack Perry.
Jack Perry. Jack, I didn't forget your name, so I'm sorry. Uh, temporary. Uh, Jackson, with the economy getting better, you know, why couldn't we go ahead and do as much military as we need? Under the understanding that we'll take it back off down the road. As the economy gets better, certainly we are hurt by like the sales tax. It's killing them, and it's lost money and so forth and so on, maintenance, sales tax, because that affects our everybody. So, uh, so we, we know we're down there. But this economy is going to pick up. So now what, Larry, what is your take on, on doing a military credit? It's a loaded question. On doing a military credit that dissipates itself within however many years, wherever we can decide. Now, having said that, let me say that. Those folks that went here for the ten years, they gave a city hand. Uh, uh, they would beat their chests and knock off, drop it what happened, you know? Reduce the military rate, that's one thing you already know. I'm not talking about just up and reducing, I'm talking about if we go up three mils, we will have a plan, we can tell the citizens of this town. We're gonna do this because we're in dire straits. You know, we, we can fix our retirement, we can fix that, and we're in dire straits. Give us time to do that, trust us that we will, and the economy continues to do better, we go, uh, then this, this military increase will come down, come back off.
Mayor, every year at budget time, you have the opportunity to adjust the military rate, whether it's up or down. So whatever this council decides to do when the next annual budget comes around, that's what we can do. If the revenue show that, that we've recovered to a point that you can afford to reduce the military rate, then you're certainly within your power to do that now.
Larry, um, to kind of add to what Jamie's asking about, you know, we go through this extensively, once a year. What's the, what's, now that Lois has, has kind of got everything at a manageable format, and a, a good, clear understanding of everything, what's the opportunity for us monthly, or at least quarterly? what's the opportunity for us monthly, or at least quarterly, to review these numbers? So that we can, you know, as we get, um, as we gather numbers, so that we can do some projections on when that will be paid off and things that we can control, so that we can be a little more proactive on a, on a monthly or quarterly basis, um, rather than just once a year where it's a big pill to swallow, kind of eat the whole, you know, the whole, but one bite at a time kind of thing?
Right, and, and I, I agree. Sometime that Lois and I talked about that. And, uh, rather than do a, an annual adjustment to the budget, we want to do a mid-year budget adjustment that will give them about six more months to finish it, the finance department figure it out. So in January, when we do the mid-year adjustment, then we will have, hopefully by then, we can have some projections for you, debt retirement and those kinds of things.
Right, so we can see where we're going. Um, but can you provide for us a monthly? Is that too much to ask to provide a monthly report of where we are? Um, I know in, in my company, we have a monthly management meeting and, and we sit down, here's the budget for the year, here's where we are, this is where we need to make adjustments, you know, so that we can literally look at it monthly?
I think that we can probably generate those reports out of generals.
Okay.
We can, we just need to get them up to date.
Right, okay. Because I'm, what my hope would be is that as we review this monthly or quarterly, it's gonna be much more positive than we think that it is. That's my hope.
That's right.
And, um, and, but I think it, I think it for us, would, who are financial gurus, would make it so much more palpable to understand and, and to, to react quickly to something if it's an adjustment up or down, whichever it needs to be.
Right. I mean, we could probably do that, but back to your point there. If you looked at the presentation I did during that, in two thousand four, our look blocks and sales tax collections were two point four million. In two thousand fourteen, they're, they're two point eight million. So over ten years, they've gone up about four hundred thousand. It's forty thousand years ago. So, you know, the folks can say that what they want to about the economy recovering, but this is not an indication that it's recovering there. Not if you look at your sales taxes. I think we're actually, we don't have any.
I'll make it with Van Ponderus next week. On something that'll. Yeah, probably can bring another hundred, maybe not one, try to put him inside there, inside the seat now. But, you know, the, yeah, I see your graph, and I can take the same graph and probably make a good difference. Uh, that's the way graphs are, okay? I'm telling you, this is kind of coming back, I know this, I know, I realize. And, and it should already be brought back. There's an election next year, twenty fourteen. And, uh, whether you like the Republicans, whether you like Democrats, that doesn't matter. I look at the changes, this thing changes. We're gonna put America back where it's supposed to be. And that's gonna help us all. And, and I'm just hopeful it is, otherwise I'm gonna crawl and huddle if that's what I make. I'm gonna take my, my stuff and go on. Uh, listen, on the, also, on the, on the council budget, I would not agree with that. Cause I go more than anybody, right here. And there's things I have to go to, I'm on the public safety, uh, board, I'm on the transportation board, and I'm on all account of boards in this city. And there's things I have to go to in Pearson, things I have to go to in, in Nashville, sometimes down in Los Angeles. It's all these boards that I'm on, and I can't just turn my back on it. A lot of business networking, being with other mayors, other council people, other cities. Uh, you, you plug in a lot of ideas and a lot of things. I can't, uh, and you're talking about a miniscule amount of money. I mean, what, what we're talking about with the council is just, uh, you're, you're swallowing a camel and straining the neck. And we're not talking about hardly any money. So, I mean, that's just my two cents worth on that. And look, if, if you do take it, if everybody agrees to take it, I'm okay with that too. I'll deal with my purse out of my pocket to get it. Cause I, I probably one of the first mayors has ever gone as much as I go. Stay involved as much as I do, and it costs money.
Well, so that we can do our jobs, based on what everyone said around the table tonight or this afternoon, it looks like that everyone's kind of in consensus with what Chris came up with as far as cuts go.
Yeah, I don't know.
Uh, that's two, two hundred thousand, taking two hundred thousand high contingency, fifty thousand dollar rate of fire, hundred thousand I'd rate it for lease, eighty-five for police cars, forty-three thousand for code enforcement, sixty-nine forty-four for the theater, that's the general fund contribution to the theater. And then twelve-five for playgrounds with them. And then we have left the Hotel Motel forty-four thousand alone. Which brings here, that's about four hundred and ten thousand, somewhere around there, in cuts.
Four, four twelve, I think.
Yeah, it's on this year.
Right. I mean, is that kind of the consensus of what councils tell them, maybe go back and work it in? Is that what I'm hearing?
I would say yes.
John?
What we're trying to do basically, this is a workshop, we're not taking any votes, but what Larry's gonna need is some type of understanding or consensus from council about going back and making some other adjustments to the budget so that we have something we can present tomorrow in the public hearing. And I just kind of listened to what Larry was saying, that was kind of what I'm hearing as well, as far as the proposed cuts. So, I mean, I just wanna make it clear, we're all trying to get some idea of the consensus, so it's, we're not taking any votes, but give Larry some direction that he can go in about what he needs to do when he sees you this afternoon.
I would think the justice would be good on those different cuts there.
And then, um, are you gonna ask about retirement and compensation? What's our consensus then?
That was the second half of the budget.
Well.
Okay, well, I said that.
We, we have to know, I mean, is that, you want us to throw that back in the mix?
I mean, I would like to see what, if we could do it, or maybe even, I forgot if it was Jewel or Mary Ann, I mentioned maybe just doing one of these two things.
Well, may I have some half of the retirement?
And we've got the longer part of it on this.
Okay. So let's, let's, this is it. So if you want to fully fund unfreeze retirement July first. And then if we can find Plan C, do Plan C for personal compensation and, uh, compensation classification adjustment.
But that's not gonna help everybody, is it?
Well, Plan C is citywide. Some people.
But it's not gonna help every single employee. And what's, 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 what's the cost difference in doing this Plan C now? And trying to do some kind of code, what's, what's your money there? A lot of money difference there.
We could wait on Plan C and try to give a code.
Well, everybody, let's, let's, hold on.
I'm just asking, what's the relationship, Plan C?
All right, let me, this is. Here's the difference. When we went back to the University of Georgia, we had them review all of the jobs.
I said all that.
Let me finish, man.
Okay.
We had them review all of the job descriptions, okay? And some people, they've had additional duties, some people have actually lost some duties, then moved where you were at the time. So all of the classifications now have been adjusted to Plan A, B, and C, which A is above market, B is at market, and C is below market. Okay? So, in the part of that that does the job classification adjustment, that compensates people that have actually had increased or decreased responsibilities. Nobody lost money in the classifications time. But many people have additional duties and they'll benefit from getting reclassified and being actually paid what they're supposed to be getting paid. And then the equity part of that adjustment is anyone that's been here less than three years, they won't receive an equity adjustment. Anywhere from three to seven, you'll receive an equity adjustment to reduce that compression so you don't have somebody that's been working here eight, nine, ten, eleven years making four seven hour more than somebody that just came to work for the city. And then there's a seven and above equity adjustment. In that, when they, when UTA did their study, I don't have the percentages here in front of me. Carl, do you remember what those were?
Um, we had them look at several things. One of them was, I think seven and above was like one percent and three to four, three to, or four to six years were five, a half of a percent.
No, I'm talking about the, uh, the market adjustment.
One point nine percent.
Okay, if it was below market, what was the increase? Anyway, there was, there was, the, the market adjustment reflected a pay increase of a certain percentage. And I think it went from like point three or something like that, one point nine? Oh, all the way from below to, to market, above market.
I think the key word was many, see an increase, that's not all.
I, I don't know.
What was, what is a three percent code of calling? I don't remember the name.
Three percent code, it helps you two hundred and ten thousand dollars if you get seven or a half for, just, just general number.
About three hundred fifteen thousand, with forty percent.
So, we could wait on this thing, go ahead and just give a code.
Well, we need to adjust all these other things out.
No, I'm talking about just, just the C. Put that on next year. That'll make a lot of difference. But if we're gonna spend this two fifteen, let's spend a little bit more and give everybody a three percent code. Everybody, not just me, not just a few, everybody. Everybody's groceries and gas costs are something too.
That was my address, the reclassification of positions.
All right.
So what you're doing is you're.
Yeah, I'm saying, put a code on that.
If you did that, then you're just as asked to break the situation that we're currently in.
And we are in one. But you can postpone that another year and still get people a code, have one, I think you should have six years, unless.
Three, six years.
So, uh, but I'm not gonna fuss with any of the other four members, I'll be, you wanna go ahead and do the Class C, I'll wait until next year and not give them a code, that's okay, we just have to do it. I'd say don't do the C, but give them a code.
Can we take a short five minute break? Before Larry for a second?
Why don't we just stay here and chit chat and talk about y'all, y'all took them outside. No, that's like. Hey now, don't anybody leave, y'all, at some point. Sweet car meeting back together, if we will. Yep, we're all here? All right, uh, where were we when we, that, that break?
I don't remember, I think we were, uh, kind of made the decision about Larry going back, taking some of the numbers that you all had given him. It was pretty much what Chris is, Chris has. And, you know, I guess everybody pretty much understands that what we have done today is have a general discussion about the budget that Larry's prepared, having a discussion about, uh, cuts could be made and maybe some additional things that might want to be to be done, such as retirement and pay increases and things such as that. Naturally tomorrow, we'll be having hearings on the military rate increase as well as another budget here at five o'clock. And I think that with the input from the public and, uh, you know, looking at the budget again, we'll have to revisit this once council had the opportunity to hear from the public. Look at the things that have been suggested today and then come back and, and see where we can crush more numbers and get Larry back to work. I think we reach a final consensus.
Okay, I'll thank you.
Yeah, uh, Jessica, no, she's still here. I'm gonna stand up. This is, uh, you wanna pass this around?
Yeah, just follow the pattern.
This is, uh, you know, on our slide, we got, where we got, how we got where we're at today. And, uh, I just wanna share this with y'all. All right, let's look at, um, let's look at the slide that says transfers into the general fund. This slide, everybody, everybody with me? Is this for you, with me? We talked about why we haven't had to increase the military rate in the past, since two thousand and five. And if you look at the transfers into the general fund, starting as far back as nineteen ninety-seven when we were, whatever mills were, four something mills back then, I believe it was. You, the, look at the red lines. That's transfers out of the, out of the gas fund into the general fund. So starting in nineteen ninety-seven, you were about four hundred fifty thousand, ninety-eight, almost seven hundred thousand, ninety-nine, six hundred fifty thousand, two thousand, five hundred thousand. And keep in mind, today's mill is about three point four six or something to that effect, somewhere thereabouts. And you can come on across and see the transfers. In two thousand and four, they only transferred, I don't know, two hundred fifty thousand dollars for whatever reason, I don't know what happened that year. Uh, Erin was here, she knows why those were such, a lot of transfer. But then you look at two thousand and five, six, seven, and eight. Four years in a row, they transferred six hundred thousand dollars out of the gas fund into the general fund. Donna's here shaking her head. She knows exactly what's been going on with Gatsby. The gas fund was cashed out for the city of Tipton. And then also in there, you've got in two thousand and five, in addition to the gas fund transfers, you had almost two hundred fifty thousand dollars transferred, um, out of the service fund, three hundred thousand, out of the service fund into the general fund. So that year they transferred six, nine hundred thousand dollars from two funds into the general fund. That's the three mills, folks. This is why you haven't had, military rates haven't had to go up. And then you look at nine, ten, and eleven, you've got three hundred, four hundred fifty, a hundred thousand. They, they were supposed to transfer two hundred thousand in two thousand and eleven out of the gas fund in the general fund, but the gas fund didn't have it. Okay? So in two thousand and ten, they transferred over a hundred thousand dollars from the Hotel Motel Fund into the general fund. So if you go through the history of why we haven't had military increases, there it is. But folks, the gas fund does not have money to transfer into the general fund anymore. Why, and then look at the, uh, price per gallon for fuel costs?
Well, it actually does, we're just gonna take it.
That's sure it does. You need to maintain a million dollar balance in that account, cause you have ten days to pay that gas bill when it comes out.
Okay, it's there, it's been robbed, though.
Been robbed on a regular basis over, since two thousand, what did I say? Nineteen ninety-seven, okay? All right, and then the cost per gallon for fuel, you can follow that across and see what that increase has done to us. We're about three dollars a gallon now. And then, look at this one called retirement. Does everybody have that one? That went back to nineteen ninety-six, we were putting four hundred seventy-four thousand, four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars annually into the retirement fund. Today. Today, we're putting two point one billion dollars in two thousand and twelve into retirement fund. There hasn't been a military rate increase to cover that increasing cost, it hasn't happened. And that's, uh, what is that, one point eight billion-ish, about that? Somebody do math.
Annually.
Annually. No military rate increase to cover those costs, none. Then you look at workers' comp and liability. Uh, two thousand and six, in our workers' comp, we were right at three hundred thousand. Today we're paying almost four hundred fifty thousand dollars annually into the, out of the funds to cover that cost, that's, that's another increase that we have to cover. Uh, our general insurance has gone from three hundred fifty thousand, we're at five hundred thousand dollars a year now. For liability insurance. So, I mean, if you wanna know why we are where we are today, I think that paints a pretty good picture for you. We've never increased the military rate to even cover the cost.
Fix costs.
Fixed costs that we have, and that's not all the fixed costs, that was just some diggings and ashes to the ground and see what we could come up with. That's why we're in the shape we're in today. And budget adjustment was an outstanding job.
Well, of course, you know, I'm sitting here myself, but Martin, because I was here in seven, I know what kind of money we had. We had enough operating money to do it for seven months without doing anything. And I did, I did, we got some budget plans back in nineteen ninety-six and nineteen seventy, proved what I said. Didn't we have the thing called the city net, it just gobbles up there?
But you know what, we gotta let that go, we, we cannot.
No, we don't gotta see any debt right now, that we're having to pay for.
We can't change the fact that we've got that debt, we gotta let that go.
But people need to understand, we didn't just get here because of that.
I know, but we can't keep going back to what happened in ninety-seven and ninety-eight and ninety-nine. We're in a pickle, we're in, we're up to our eyeballs and, I won't use the word because we're on TV, but we have gotta fix it. It doesn't matter what happened, it doesn't matter who did it, it doesn't matter. All we can do, all this council can do is take the junk we're dealt with and move forward. We can't keep beating the horse of city debt, the debt's there, we gotta pay it, let's move on, we gotta get retirement pays, we gotta get the employees where they're at least, they're not even gonna be at market rate, you know, for, for employees. We gotta at least do that, and we can't keep going back to what happened then, all we can do is look forward, so, um.
Well, we gotta go back, catch you and repeat itself, so we don't have one piece of that, so, yeah, we do have to remember, we gotta see your. Let me go after. Um, yeah, we are where we are, dude, you're exactly right, certainly are. And, uh, we did get there yesterday. These are good, these are good, and somebody wanna go over these two things you just got? Uh, Lois, I believe you gave us this?
I just changed.
This is some, that's why. Okay. Are we done? I can call the employee and say what they wanna say, this way? Alright.
Speak freely.
It's y'all's turn, why don't we start on the left side and go this way, somebody on the far left start it and, you wait your ways.
I'll start. Call us your name. My name's Lee Dunston, I'm the chief investigator with the city of Tipton Police Department. And, uh, first, let me just tell you, I appreciate how much you all have done, and effort everybody's put into this thing, I know it's a, a tough thing to deal with. And I told Mayor Peter during the break, you know, but for y'all, the unpopular decisions that you're gonna have to make either way, so I'm. I will say from the police department's standpoint, I hate that Miss Cee had to leave, but to say that the sheriff's department would or could take up any of the, the services inside of the city that the police department does, she doesn't understand the workings of that. They will not, and I'm sure if they did, they would be coming to y'all for money as well. Uh, so I, I think that's kind of a, it cancels itself out. I do appreciate the fact that y'all have put so much effort into bringing back the retirement, that's not just the police department. Uh, I think that would be a big step towards retaining good employees and establishing the loyalty that we should have historically when you get a government employee, you know you're gonna take a hit on take it. But it's always been a benefit, whether you're for state, municipal, or whatever, so I think that would be a, a big thing. But it cuts to the police department and, and most of the other departments that you're providing service, we are almost totally reactive. And at some point, in some cases, Mr. R, we can't react like we ought to be able to. And it's a pay me now, pay me later sort of thing, because if you don't have enough people out there to proactively police, it's sort of like the situation you're in now with the military, everything's relative. Crime rate goes up, you become reactive again, crime rate's gonna keep going up, the only way to circumvent that would be to have enough people be pro act. I understand cuts have to be made, but just food for thought, my understanding of the military rate, you go up one, one and a half mill now, next year you're gonna have to have the same conversation. And next year you're gonna have to say, have the same conversation. Fight the bullet, tell the people, just because we hadn't done it like we should have, as Mr. Reiner was pointed out, and, uh, do the unpopular but necessary thing. Thank y'all, all, all you said.
Thank you, sir, anybody on that last line of three there? Tell us who y'all are.
Hello, Chuck Casper, I do all the building maintenance for the city here. Um, I wanted to just say thank you for the effort that you've put into all of this. I realize it must be difficult to sit around that table and have, you know, you got two hundred and eighty employees, I think you said, you have basically their livelihood in your hands right now as far as how they're gonna live for the next year. I've been here almost nine years, I have seen three, maybe four pay raise increases in the past nine years. And, uh, I, and I see what goes on with the people who make less than I do, some make more than I do. Uh, the ones who are really lower down on the, on the total, well, they are, are really, really struggling, some even call in to work because they can't afford to buy gas and go in there and beat it. I think all that really needs to be considered. Uh, myself, like many others, I came to work here because we had a retirement plan, we had, uh, really good health benefits and, uh, I, me personally, I took a pay cut to come to work for the city just because I would have a retirement. And, um, I, I would just like for council to really, really consider your employees when, when you're talking about this military increase. I understand that there are a lot of people who are really on a fixed income that live in the community, um, they are. On the same note, there are people in this community that are on a fixed income, but you see them walking down the street with cell phones and, and spending money at, at juke joints on the weekends and different things, so. I understand things are tight for people out there, but everybody's, you know, not everybody out there is having a struggle like a lot of your city employees are right now, and I'd really appreciate it if y'all would consider that.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else on that line? Let's go to the next line, which would be these four.
Don't read this wrong, man. Don't read that, the police department. It's apparent that y'all are here because of, uh, a dysfunctional past government, and y'all have something very serious to deal with. Mr. Reiner, everything, what he said, he's explained where we come from to where we are now, uh, cut and dry. And this, this military rate, three percent or three military rate, that's not gonna break the bank. Explain to the citizens of Tipton why you're doing what you're doing. Uh, and, I mean, you all hired Mr. Reiner, you know, to run the city, and he knows what he's doing, he does research, uh, this is what he has to say. The citizen's not gonna be upset about that, I mean, you may have one or two there, but I mean, you gotta make a tough decision, uh, the city has to run and it has to function properly. Uh, as far as these raises, uh, the University of Georgia said, I think that was a good idea, uh, you know, as opposed to someone working here ten years and he's only making fifty cents more than someone who just came on, you know, two days ago. Uh, and if you go with that two percent across the board, three percent across the board, the salary's gonna go up, but still, he's still making fifty cent more than, you know, what it was, uh, that three, seven, ten year, uh, stage. That's, uh, something to drive, I mean, because three years, you're never gonna get a raise, seven years, you're never gonna get a raise, ten years, you're never gonna get a raise. Uh, and it, it, it's not a whole lot, but it's something, uh, with the retirement. Same thing as, uh, Lieutenant Dunston said, you know, uh, same thing as he said, you know, uh, you should be very retired, but Peter was Robin Paul. And it's to the point now where Paul's in the, in the red and Peter's going to Robin Rob, can't do that anymore. Uh, and a tough decision that Mr. Reiner has explained to, what needs to go on to make this city function properly, I think some thought might need to be really, really weighed on, on, on his opinion. And that's pretty much all I have to say, and I need another detective.
Alright, that was the last one.
I said I wasn't gonna do this with a zed in here, I'm not much of a media guy. My name's Raymond Redden, I'm just the chief of the police department. And this is my twenty-ninth year here, and I was here back when it was good to work here, great retirement, we used to get five percent raises every year. But everybody's went through the attrition of stuff through the years, and it's not what it used to be. We, uh, I wanna talk about kind of what the things, how they have impacted the police department, and, and the, the main thing that I see is I'm in charge of our hiring process. We've lost about the six folks since January first. Uh, we have, well, I'm sure Chief Daddy still go, we have eight openings now, we have a couple of now injuries, one in the military. We are having a heck of a time recruiting folks, nobody wants to come here. I, I can tell you that the applications that we're getting are folks that have been run off of somewhere else, uh, they've been on post probation for something, they're folks we're not interested in hiring. And I gotta get Chief Daddy, you know, his dude, he's stuck to that, I mean, if something comes up in your background, he's not, we're not, we're not gonna change our, our criteria, our, our expectations just because the factor down. We've had to, you know, we've really had to try to hustle. One of the things that really sends a red flag to us is, you know, I referred to being back here years ago when we were really early in the police department, we had a lot of things going for us. You know, when we were on the council the first time, we had a great deal, I mean, we had, uh, tuition reimbursement, we had a program that paid us for training and education and stuff. One year we won an award for being the department in the city, in the state that had the most training out, that's pretty good for a department that's only considered a medium sized department. But what's happened is, is we've had to cut a lot of that kind of stuff out, and it, it, it's hurts, and that used to be a real calling card for us, the retirement. What is, the, the take home card thing, we actually have a guy right now that's, that talked to me the other day that lives just over into the Turner County line, more or less told me he's quitting, going to the sheriff's office, we don't need to drive a car on. And the city policy, we can't change that if we wanted to. But we're losing these folks, and something that really opened my eyes was two weeks ago, we were, we, we were putting a guy through the background, uh, process and had him lined up for a polygraph. And the day before he takes his polygraph, he calls me and says, I took the job with Dover PD. We can't compete with Dover PD, we got problems. And the last few years, we've lost folks to Ashburn, we've lost to Dover, we, we, you know, you name it, I mean, folks, for whatever reason, everybody's dealing with the same economy. Obviously, these folks have something that they're able to offer that we can't. Most of them have a retirement, in, in all honesty, we lose them to the sheriff's office and their retirement's not that good. I mean, it's not near what we used to have, but it's better than what we have right now, so it's really tough to, to, to compete with folks that are a half mile from us. And then there's just, I, I, I just can't believe we got to the point that we lose folks to some of the departments we're losing to. And, and that was the, the, the main thing I wanted to focus on, what I see is, that's what it's done to us, and we gotta get back to where we can compete with people.
Franklin, you do crime tests.
Yeah, most of it.
What's, what's been the trend over the past year to you that you notice, that sticks out?
Well, he can probably attest to a lot of this, a lot of the things that we've gone through is, you know, back in the, shoot, back in the eighties, nineties when I was a detective, everything was violent crime, burglaries, robberies, now everything, sex crimes, child extortion, tax fraud stuff. Stuff that takes a whole lot more time and effort to work, and it's really put them in a situation where they're, they're, we used to think, when I was a detective, that we were really strung out. We don't, we didn't know what it was like to be strung out till we see what these guys are doing, because they have stuff coming in every day that, you know, there's always a new scam. And, 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 you know, the, the turbo tax thing, you know, you know, running rag, and not to mention the other little things that you gotta deal with, the burglaries, the robberies that come in, you know. Would you be your estimation of white collar crime, a shot way up? And, and it's built much more lucrative, guy goes and beats toward a gun, he's gonna be sent by an officer, beats steal your identity, he's gonna get a few thousand.
We have to prioritize the cases that we work as detectives, and we are facing the city in a lot of cases, the tur- certainly the case, the facing the criminal justice system for these victims. And it's extremely frustrating to have to tell somebody I simply do not have time to work your case, because when you're the victim of a crime, that's. That's the most important thing to you. And we have to do it in a very diplomatic way, but at the same time, I know what I'm telling them, and that's, we don't, we don't have the time, we don't have the manpower to stop this for you, we just, we just don't.
And, you know, me and Chief Daddy discuss this all the time, if we could fill our eight positions, we'd be in pretty good shape. You could give us a hundred more officers, but if we can't fill them, it's, it's a moot point. We have to get to where we can, if we can start hiring folks, and good, we can hire folks tomorrow, but it's not gonna be folks you want to place in the town.
You know, uh, tagging on to that though, as the community's looking for economic development, you know, John, you, you mentioned you've got a respective industrial person, chamber of the county, we're all trying to grow Tipton. Businesses aren't gonna locate in a place that the crime rate's high.
We haven't called.
And they don't, they don't look at the reason that the crime rate, they don't look, they don't go to say, well, it's because they don't have the resources, they don't, all they know is that's just not an area where I don't wanna go. And so it starts this vicious cycle, and it plugs in talking about, you were talking about public works a minute ago and not being able to clean the streets, it's about that broken window syndrome that Steve Hyman talks about all the time, which is true. It starts with a broken window in a building, and then it looks abandoned, and then the drug dealer's on the corner, and then all of a sudden someone gets shot. And it's, if we don't provide the resources to patch the broken windows, it spirals downhill, so, police force and, and safety of our community is, is, is mandatory, that's not even negotiable.
Thank you, sir, next, uh, I'll, I, who are y'all?
Okay. I respect Lee Dunston.
Okay, um, next, right out of your startup in front. Man, I'm having nothing to be quiet. And that's a compliment, so that's okay. Uh, Ricky, anybody else? Nobody on this?
Well, Ricky, I have a solid list tomorrow, they pretty much covered it. I'm very simple, I don't go for all this mid and Joe, all this, but I just, I've always related it back there, you'll chuckle with this, 'cause I always relate it back to. Everyone of y'all sitting up there, to make this decision, y'all go to Walmart, you go to the gas station, and you cry all the way up there, but you always turn around and come back with something. Pump that fifty gallons of gas in that car and you keep going, even though it went up, two dollars a gallon. And that relates back to what y'all gotta do now. We have to have the money to keep y'all's service going, uh, gotta have employees first, first and foremost. And, you know, that's what everybody's saying, and, uh, if, you know, money don't grow on trees. But we all fuss, those people that call you and say don't fuss are the same people that go to Walmart and keep buying that stuff that went up. They keep pumping that gas, they keep driving, they don't park their car. And, you know, that's, that's what we're looking at. It's hard, I don't want a tax increase, but I, I live in the county, I've been pretty much getting some money every year on the property taxes and all. But, uh, that's, like you said, when you, cash cow dries up, you gotta do something, and. It's nice to say that we have increased our taxes over the last several years, but now it's really come back to haunt everybody. Unfortunately, it's haunting you guys that took over. But now, you know, it's time to make a decision. I really feel, you know, if we don't do some kind of increase, you may not ever see the next year to sit up there for and make a decision. Because it's just like any business, you know, the hole gets deeper. And you finally just disappear. So, you know, I just, we do, in our apartment, there's a lot of free service that's given away. You just can't do that anymore. You used to could do that. But, you know, we have to cut that out. And I think we showed you before, just in one section on our recycling side, there's a hundred thousand dollars given away every year. We can't do that, can't continue to do that in services. Somebody has to pay for it. Appreciate the opportunity, thank y'all for what y'all do and it was a hard decision. Thank you for what you do, appreciate that.
It seems to me that the general consensus of all of you guys is not necessarily, okay, well, we got to cut the budget. We may have to raise the number, but everyone of you guys have said, we got to fix retirement, we got to help our employees. And I just wanna say, I really appreciate that, you know, because we're the ones, and I know this is mostly department heads and directors in here. But we're the ones, and we're the ones that support the people that are out there seeing the citizens every day. You know, I know if in solid ways, if they have to rearrange one of their pickups and somebody's trash can don't get picked up, you guys are the ones that have to hear the complaints. But us and sanitation, they're the ones that are actually out there facing the citizens. So I just wanted to say, I appreciate you guys. It seems like we're in the forefront of your minds. Not necessarily all the cuts we have to do, but what do we have to do to fix retirement? What do we have to do to give our employees a raise? I know, you know, we make, us as directors, most of us in this room, we're kind of the upper crust of, as far as salaries and all go for the city. But we're struggling to, I mean, you know, three dollars and thirty cents a gallon driving back and forth to Ashburn for me is, I mean, it's hard. I can only imagine what it is for the, for the public worst guy out there that makes half what I do, that has to drive back and forth every day. So I just want to say, I appreciate y'all looking out for the employees and trying to put us first, basically.
All right, this is last thing. They're the best for last, don't they?
Right, you sure?
No, I'm not sure.
Did it say no retirement yet?
Yeah. No, thank you for your remark, you can sit back now.
I'm Dawn Payton, work for Utilities Department. I want to commend the council and all the employees, because everybody had awesome comments. If and when you decide to do, do what you need to do, do what you have to do without the mileage rate, I don't think you're gonna have any problem finding backup. Personally, if I had a parent or a grandparent, I would rather them have an officer or a fireman come to their house than the forty-five dollars I'd be glad to pay that they didn't have to give them the service. The last several years that the general fund transferred from the gas fund, to reiterate what Larry said, the gas fund really didn't have those funds. They went down to zero savings, to no money to cover the expenses from the gas bill. And operational costs were having to be cut to fund the general fund to the point to where the gas fund would not balance. Now that is the honest truth. So I commend you with the job that you have. I don't envy you, but I promise you, nobody is gonna be more supportive than any of the people in the city of Tifton of you guys. And you know, as well as I know, you can't make everybody happy. It's an unpopular decision. I commend you and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Dawn. If I could add to that, during the break we took while giving Miss Rollin', she's always our savior's grave. She reminded all of us that the state has put in place something for the senior citizens. Only if you elaborate on that. It made me feel a lot better about the senior citizens. They're paying a hundred and one.
Well, actually, it wasn't the state that put it in place.
It was us.
It was the city of Tifton that adopted last year a request that the legislature allow us to put on the ballot an additional ten thousand dollar exemption for senior citizens. And right now, based on a hundred thousand dollar home, senior citizen with the exemption that they have, it's an exemption, twenty-five thousand dollars is paying a hundred and one dollars a year. If we stay at the same mileage rate we are right now, I think I told you all that that was gonna be thirty-three dollars and seventy-five cents a year. If it goes up three mils, it'll be forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents a year. So it's dropping over half, even if the city of Tifton increases three mils.
And see, we need y'all as our employees and your family to spread that kind of word. I know Natasha put it in the Gazette, we'll have it on film. Those are the kind of, those are the kind of good things that we're gonna need. Because my main concern was our senior citizens. It's scary, so thank you, Rollin', for that. I just wanted to add that. Anybody else? The other two guys want to say something?
I'll say something. Two simple points that I want to make, and thank you for being here to speak. I'm Burke Rowe, Director of Environment Management of City Attorney. I work with a lot of employees directly and indirectly with safety and contact. And since I've been here for eight and a half years, or about, matter of fact, it's about eight and a half years, I have progressively seen the morale of employees go down. And it's not always, it's just in general. And a lot of that has to do with the fact that most people are doing a whole lot more than what they were when I started here in proportion. You know, not everything's matched that, but it is still the case. And one thing that was kind of presented, I remember hearing, is that, you know, when we went through the time of the bad economy, which really hasn't corrected itself totally. And, you know, we don't know what tomorrow will bring, as you know, Mayor. But, you know, if we would hang in there and we would do what y'all requested us to do, you know, then we would get that support. And I think that's where we're at. We, most of us have hung in there. Most of us here in this room have been here for a while. And the employees under us have been here for a while. And in my opinion, it's done actual work all across the board. You know, I just, just want to say that though, you can only hang in there for so long. And I think the police department's seeing that now. I think some other departments are seeing that now. Where you're getting attrition, it's just happening. People get weary and tired, they do, of waiting. The second point that I want to make is kind of a philosophical point, I'm not trying to push the issue, but in life, there are really two types of people. Those who create problems and those who solve them. And where you're at right now is a situation where there's some problems that need to be solved. And it's not always easy, because there's a cost that goes with solving problems. But, you know, it's kind of the way, you want to be remembered, problem solving problems or making them worse. And that's where it's at, bottom line. Thank you for the opportunity, thank you for what y'all did, okay?
God, thanks for the invite, wouldn't make you hurt.
I've got one more in back there, I'd like to say something.
Mayor, I'll just, I got a couple numbers here that I was just running together.
And you're Crystal?
I'm Crystal Craft, Public Works, Street Department is my leverage department of the ones that we're under city. I'm eleven people down now. I just wanted to throw some numbers at you, just dedicated employees. I've got several people, me, myself, I'm just shy of twenty years. I have several that are pushing right at their thirty year mark. Those of us that have been here forever, I've got one employee that's got about fifteen hundred hours in sick leave. If you calculate that out, that is a hundred and eighty-seven days that he could have missed. But being a dedicated employee, he was here every single day. Not only is that a hundred and seventy, a hundred and eighty-seven days, that's thirty-seven and a half weeks. That is almost an entire year that he's giving to the city of Tifton without using it. And that's his sick leave. That's not including his vacation time. We have people that are losing their vacation time monthly because we are so far behind. We are so unupped with employees for the tasks that are, you know, given to us to make, accomplished. With that, there's a hundred and forty hours a month that our employees should take off for vacation that aren't, that can't do it. Because if they do, that's how much more further behind we're gonna get. I just want you to know that you've got very dedicated employees. A lot of us here love this city. I was born and raised by the city. My father gave over thirty years of his life to this city. I gave almost twenty. And just each one of us in here, I think probably each one of us don't, none of us have less than five years or better. We've been here through the good times, we've been here through the bad. We're gonna be here until it gets better, because I've got faith in y'all. I've got faith in the citizens. But something's definitely got to change. Because if not, I mean, when we're all gone, all that knowledge that we have, that we, that we've learned from our predecessors, that we've taught ourselves, that we've even gotten educated by the citizens. But if we don't get people that are coming behind us that we can pass that knowledge on to, who's gonna operate? If I can't get somebody that I know full well, that I can pass everything that I know down to that person, who's gonna do what I do? Ricky, if he can't get somebody behind him, who's gonna come in and do that? Can't just replace him all of a sudden. It's gonna take time and it's gonna take somebody that wants to do it. You've got people that, that come to work, they're here from eight to five, Monday through Friday. Me, myself, I couldn't tell you when I did leave at five o'clock, just because I was supposed to leave at five o'clock. My children call me and ask me, Mama, when are you coming home? When I finish what I'm doing, honey. And I hope the majority of the room here feels the same way I do. Very dedicated. We like what we do. I said a year ago when I got out of school that I wouldn't ever work at a job that I didn't love. And that's what I've done every day since I started here. I say at the office that I miss my calling, because I think everybody comes in for therapy to me. I hear all the goods, I hear all the bads. I just, the guys are behind y'all. They're just waiting to see that you're really gonna do something. Don't just tell me y'all are, do it. Thank you.
Thank you. You made me cheer up. Thank y'all all for what you said. Yes, sir. We're good now. Well, you can adjourn, be fair. Y'all can go home and your staff can go back to work. Be in adjourned.